To the way of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which they are one nation under God.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to see a crowd again. Full meeting to order, approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? Prove the minutes in November six. Um, and let's look correct, motion to approve. All in favor? Prove the plans.
Well, I had six, seven, the eight, seven fifty point nine three, six, seven, eight. Seven fifty point ninety three. And drainage, I had fifty one eighty point five oh. Five thousand one hundred and eighty point fifty.
Numbers look correct, be second. Any discussion? All in favor? General public concerns.
I can know if there's any update on the. Roll that quarry situation.
Not that we know of, not this minute.
We are. Thomas and Telvis talks to us, hopefully this morning here.
But he won't be here.
We don't.
John will be here, probably go into closed session, be the last thing on the agenda.
If that happens, it'll be a closed session. That's why it's printed on the agenda here someplace.
Yeah.
So is Wednesday still our thirty days on that? Did anybody find out that? Pretty important.
The Board of Adjustment. The meeting that we had was not official. His attorney found that in two thousand twenty. July first, the legislators changed. The. Ruling or ordinance on that, it was three thirty five dash eleven. Stating that you had to live in the county to be on the Board of Adjustment. Three of us that's been in there over fifteen, twenty years live in town. One Livermore, one Renwick, and one Dakota City. Therefore, that meeting was null and void.
So is that like then it didn't happen? So we don't have thirty days?
It's like it didn't happen. Well.
So that is confirmed because you didn't know that last week, but that we're confirmed on that now?
There, his lawyer come back with that. So now we have to appoint. Three new members to the Board of Adjustment and start all over.
How does that process happen?
Um, that we gotta get legal counsel and find out what's going on. We don't know for sure yet where we're at.
But since last meeting, we've had, when we made the comment that we needed people to. Step up for that, we've had numerous people. Uh, call, contact, or say that they would. Serve on that board. So the positive news is we have people out in the country that would qualify and. Have said that they would be interested. Either one of the ones that I've talked to would fit the bill, so we just have to visit with John and see where we're at.
And I know we were told to appeal that process if we felt that we, you know, that that was what we wanted to do. Um, I know I did. I think there were a few others, but does that?
What we're lacking is for all of us on the county side, so Board of Adjustment, all you folks, Board Supervisor. Is specific legal advice that we don't have yet. To answer any of your questions, we can't really answer them because we don't have the answers. So that's, I mean, and I don't think it's Randy's not here. But Randy's on Zoom, there he is. And Randy more than. Work certainly can say something.
Yeah, we've had several appeals on it. Randy's got all of them. Um, we wanna make sure that we do everything legally. So we're gonna wait for legal counsel. Either the county attorney or another lawyer. That can give us advice on how to interpret the law and make sure that we do it right.
So in the meantime, is somebody making sure that he doesn't, that Cole knows everything legally?
Randy's keeping an eye on him.
Your, your session will be tomorrow, but.
We're, we're sometime this afternoon or this morning, we'll be talking with John. That's the county attorney.
Because he also applied to dig under the road, right?
Right, that was denied because we didn't have contractors or anything. Know who was digging, so. That's where we're at right now. We're just waiting for. Legal advice, so everything is up and above board and legal, so we don't get ourselves in trouble. I wish there was more I could tell you, but right now we can't till we get legal advice.
Will the best come back next Monday then again?
See what's on the agenda. That's where we're at.
But Cole has to reapply, right?
Also again, that's.
Once, once the Board of Adjustments is born, he has to reapply.
Uh, it's the way I understand it, but we gotta have legal advice on it.
Everything that we say and that, there's a lot of conjecture. We don't wanna operate under conjecture. Dave is really succinctly stating it. We wanna get sound, correct legal advice and any decisions. From the Board of Adjustment or the Board of Supervisors that are absolutely solidly correct. Operating under the proper statutes and ordinances.
So if this, let's say the Board of Adjustments. So you don't know if you guys have the authority or the Board of Adjustments to make the decision now.
We don't have, we don't know for sure.
That's the thing, they're getting, all comes back to and, and we're not really keeping anything from you. We don't really know and we want to find out.
So if you don't have any Board of Adjustments, you don't know if it defaults back to the supervisors or, I mean, that's a question.
Right, and that's what we wanna find out. Like, we've heard this, that, and the other thing. We don't wanna make any assumptions.
I understand, I just.
We, we can't, and everyone else, we're really wanna get this straightened out.
I'm just curious, that happened last Monday, we kinda all found this out, and then their county attorney was out of town?
He was at training.
Yeah, trained, okay, but he's been back for a while.
He should have been back Friday, but.
Oh, Friday, okay.
We didn't, we don't know. I know he's on the three day training.
Okay, so it's for sure that we don't have it and we're about a thirty day thing coming.
Right, yeah, thirty days gone after one day.
And is there some sort of expectation when this legal, legal advice will actually? Will actually know it, or we just wait and tell?
So we talk to the county attorney and he gives us advice, we may hire outside. Uh, lawyers to. Read disordnance and tell us what we can do and what we can't do. We don't know nothing till we take legal advice.
The answer would be as soon as possible, and obviously much sooner than later. This isn't what on, this is not on the back burner. This is.
Well, I'm John Brady, I'm the county attorney, if you guys don't know me. So what we had happen, I think, guessing all of you know, is that. Three members of the Board of Adjustment are not, do not live out in the unincorporated area from both county. So the action taken by the Board of Adjustment, we didn't have a quorum. Which means we didn't have at least three members to vote on this, so there's been no action taken. So that we would treat the application as still on file and not been denied. Uh, separately from that. I spoke to. Mr. Anderson's attorney on Friday last week. And. I think what they're trying to do. Is obviously they're moving dirt, which there's nothing we can do about anybody moving dirt on their ground. Um, I realize there's a big concern over. A quarry going in there, but. As of right now, they're moving dirt. Um, his attorney says he plans to go forward. I do not know at this time if he's going to reapply, but we would still need at least three members. Of a Board of Adjustment to make a decision on their application. Um. This is not something that. Um, anybody was really aware of. That we didn't have the right membership on the Board of Adjustment. Uh, Mr. Anderson's attorney requested information about where people lived. And I'll be honest with you, I didn't know where anybody lives, so, um, it was a surprise, I think, to all of us. So the next step. Is I need to talk to the board about. How they wanna proceed with. Mr. Anderson and as far as what's going on, because if. If we look at the zoning ordinance. In order to have a quarry, you would need. Permission from the Board of Adjustment, which at this point, Mr. Anderson does not have. So. Um. The question is, how quickly can we get? A new Board of Adjustment, uh, we need three new members, but we at least need one new member. And then what the county does from there. It does fall a little bit into the supervisor's lap in that. They would be the ones to decide whether we would prosecute any kind of zoning violation. Okay? Um, at this point, though, I don't think we have. A zoning violation, I would have to go out and look, but. From what I understand, we haven't had anything suggesting. That he's like blasting or, or digging out rock or anything like that. Um. And then the options would be. It'd be like a, a misdemeanor, civil misdemeanor, we would file a complaint in magistrate court. And we could ask for an injunction. Or we could ask if he'd be fined. Uh, I don't think anybody's gonna put him in jail over this if the county were to forbid. Those are our, those are our two main options, and then we're on this, the agenda today to. Possibly go into closed session to discuss what to do as far as what is our next step? No, the reason that's, I'm asking that we go into closed session on that is. I would like the whole county not to be privy to. The legal advice that I would give them going forward and what we should do now. Um. I would like to tell you all, this is a very quick process, the day to day, nothing in the legal system works like that. Um. So the goal today is to figure out sort of a plan of action on what we do next. And. And that's all, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to answer your question.
Would it be advantageous for? The people that are not in favor of this to start working on like a petition or anything like that, or legal advice ourselves?
If, if you're adverse to this and, and you're concerned about this. Then there's nothing wrong with, with all, with you talking to a lawyer as far as what. Your private recourse would be if a new Board of Adjustment were to approve this, or if this goes through somehow. What you all could do, I am not sure on like private nuisance rights and private property rights. As far as. My understanding is you got a lot of people at the meeting, right? Um, yeah, you can sign a petition, you can make your arguments. You can. Send one person as like a group leader to make all of your arguments and then say who they're from. So yeah, you can do that.
But regardless. All of these steps, you know, the board and then, but regardless, before it gets approved, he has to meet the standards, right?
Yes.
And who qualifies if the standards are met or not?
Well, the Board of Adjustment makes it, makes a decision on whether. The permit should be approved. They are supposed to. Um. Look at certain things we have. In our zoning ordinance, we appoint many things to address, and then in the application, I think there's only seven. So they would make a decision based on. What you all present, Mr. Anderson would present, and what our zoning ordinance does and doesn't allow.
At the end of the day, he still has to go through that process of the Board of Control, of adjustments. He can't do anything until that process is going through.
That is thoroughly our argument. I don't know what his argument, but. Um, our argument is that yes, he needs to go through his only. But as far as how they would deal with that in a court, I don't know. I don't know how they would argue what they know. At this point, I just know. Um, their plan is to go forward. And so that's why I'm down here today to discuss what we do next.
So my question is, if the zoning board was compromised, did the supervisors have the authority to make the decision?
No.
No.
No, not based on how our zoning ordinance is, you know. So, uh, the only thing that the supervisors can decide is whether we take legal action. Okay, um. They can ask, based on our zoning ordinance, they can ask the Board of Adjustment to reconsider their ruling, but. The Board of Supervisors does not act as like the overruling five. So you would have to go through the Board of Adjust.
So we would go back and reappoint, and I hate to make you keep turning to you.
No, that's okay, I'm in a swivel chair.
But we, we're looking for three, so we would reappoint three and then go back to the hearing. Part of the, and I.
That would be what I think we need to do, yes. Um, and like I said, we need a quorum, so quorum is three out of five. So we need at least three people on the board.
We have some quality candidates that have stepped up.
If we could. It would be nice to have five, but if we could get at least three, that would be.
We have two that are still on it, right?
Yeah, that's why, yeah.
So we need three more.
We need three more, but we need, it is, well, you just need a quorum, so.
I understand.
But yes, three more would be great.
And then, then he reapplies, and if he's being called and reapplying for his permit.
I would argue he probably doesn't need to reapply.
Then that's.
We just consider it.
Consider it's already in our hands.
Yes.
So the new people need to hear.
Right, so, eh, okay, this wouldn't happen in the darkness, okay? What would not happen is. New members be appointed, they just randomly meet and make a decision with nobody there. There would be the same process, it would. I just don't think that Mr. Anderson needs to make another application. I would consider his application on file and ready to be ruled on, so you'd have another meeting of the Board of Adjustment. Where all of you, one of you, half of you, three times as many of you can come and. Make your presentation, you can argue your side, and Cole and his lawyer would be able to argue their side.
And we would be made aware.
Yes, I absolutely have to.
Just like the first time, it's basically, if that was null and void after the information John spoke of, but. Found out it wasn't a non-board. Then once you have a board correctly appointed members, then the process would start over.
As in actually mailing out letters?
Yes, this is like John stated, it would be just, you all were obviously aware of the first hearing. It would be the same thing.
Yes, thank you, Eric, yeah.
Be the same thing.
You will not have to. Just randomly hear about it somewhere.
Yeah, it, it's not gonna be a covert operation. I mean, it's gonna be.
Just crossing these dot nines though.
It's not out on a Saturday, at least I, we got our letter out on Saturday and the meeting was on Thursday, so it wasn't a whole lot of time to.
We don't handle mail, so that's one thing we, we just put it in the mailbox, so.
So, but yes, you would all get personal notice. If you got personal notice last time, you get personal notice this time, and. Yeah, it's gonna be. Probably a quick turnaround for when you would get your notice to meet. Like the requirement on notice in meetings is that you get it at least a day before. Um. If you wanna get real technical, it probably matters when it mailed out, uh, that's why, I mean. The supervisors tend to post their agenda on Thursdays before their Monday meeting. But they just need to post it the day before. The idea is all of you who are here today would have gotten personal notice last time, so you'll get it again, um. And you should be aware when.
I'm not sure everybody in the room got notified last night, I think this. And I, I think Randy can, can speak about that, but I think he's only required to notify people within five hundred feet.
Yeah, and I. So I, I can't imagine that that would change, I think Ray would do the same thing he did last time.
We all know and understand now what's going on now.
Yes.
That first letter came and you read through that and you didn't, you didn't know Cole was doing this, you didn't really understand what was going on. But we all know now, and we can definitely get in touch with each other.
Okay.
We found out by somebody calling and we drove out there, that's how we found out, so it wasn't like.
So does this put into question every decision that Board of Adjustments has made since two thousand and twenty? Or should I not be asking that question?
I think that's a very fair question. And. You know, thankfully, they haven't made a ton of decisions, but, uh, yeah, I don't think it would be a tough argument for someone to make. So, uh, if. I, in my opinion on the Board of Adjustment is if you file an application for a variance or a special use permit. And it's denied. You would still have the ability to come back later and change your application and sort of try again. Um, because I think our zoning ordinance said you could only apply once. So if, if someone feels that they were wronged or they didn't like the decision. Uh, yeah, the decision's probably out, and they could definitely come back and ask again, or. They could probably contact the Board of Adjustment or Randy and say, hey, our request was. Heard in two thousand twenty-one or twenty-two. Um, it was denied, we want it reheard, and at that point. I don't know that we necessarily make them file a new application, as long as we can find their application. But yeah, um, this is not like the greatest. Find in the world.
I have a question, okay, is his lawyer, you talked to his lawyer?
Yeah.
Is he more or less making the decision like you guys didn't have your, um. Right people on there, and so now that avoids that, so now Cole can go forward.
Well, um.
And he can have a mind, so you guys do whatever you want, but hey, the law is the law, and you guys didn't do the first step of law properly.
Well, I think that's, that's part of his argument, um. I think most of his argument is. With you didn't do this right, so now it's up to you to stop. Which is. It sounds really awful. But for hit from. Mr. Anderson's side. And, and I'm not necessarily saying you wanna look at it in this perspective, but from his side. The idea that I'm gonna force the county to step in and stop me means. We then have to make a decision on what to do. We have to go forward with what we have. And. Mr. Anderson can argue like, hey, I did, I can go and do this, and. Then they're not stopped from doing anything. They could always appeal an adverse decision to district court if they wanted to. But they don't, their plan is that we're gonna do the work. Which is. Not a bad plan. If you're Mr. Anderson, right, it's frustrating for us, but.
But it wasn't denied, it wasn't approved either.
Right, it still sits.
Yeah, so I don't get, I don't understand how he thinks he can just go forward, or how the lawyer, how his lawyer can be advising him to just go forward. He didn't get an approval. And the law says he has to have it.
So. My guess would be that they will be challenging the law. Um, so. They have different ways to do that, but. Right. The smartest way for them to proceed, which I didn't realize until Friday afternoon, is make us do the work. And that doesn't get rid of any of their arguments or any of their legal remedies. So if we file a zoning violation and we win, they can still appeal and still challenge everything in another court. At not a great expense, and you don't have to go to the Court of Appeals, we don't have to write. Twenty-page briefs and argue in front of three judges, right? And you're waiting here in front of one judge. And so if. While annoying. From his perspective, it's not a terrible way to go about it. Obviously, it's not gonna make any friends. But.
Even if they go into the jury, they still have to meet the standards that are set out.
They would, yes. But I think. The thing that makes the most sense to me is they're gonna argue that the standards are not correct, right? They're gonna argue that. What we've done is not correct in the zoning, right? They're gonna try to get a more favorable reading of the zoning ordinance than the Board of Adjustment would give them. Alright, does that make sense? Yeah, just like a kid that gets in trouble with dad and then goes to mom and like, whoa, 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 whoa. What are you gonna do, mom? So.
I'm assuming our zoning ordinances are the same as other counties.
I, I think so. I, I. They're wildly different from Webster County, but I would, I would have guessed that smaller counties like us would have similar zoning orders, but I haven't gone through them. I did look at Webster County, and there's like a hundred pages.
So John, I, I think our biggest, one of our biggest hurdles is to re, get those three appointed. And then bring them up to speed, because most of those have no clue what goes on, so it's gonna take them a while to learn. What Randy and this, the board has been doing.
Right.
So it's gonna take a little bit of time for them to be able to go listen or to hear. The arguments that were presented, right?
Right.
This isn't something you just read a book and.
No, no, it's not, we don't have specified training for the Board of Adjustment, so. Um.
That's why it's hard to fill these spots when.
Right.
People volunteer to spend hours listening and.
And especially now, when anybody that volunteers probably has some idea that. There's, there's a contentious issue in front of them, so yeah, um.
Or if I want to get them. Up to speed or, you know, we can kind of do whatever or something, so he's basically.
Well, we're gonna talk about that today. Um. And. Yeah, I'm sure all of you are frustrated because you would like to hear us talk about this, but. We, we have a right to go into closed session to discuss. Legal strategy and how we would proceed in any kind of court case and. But his attorney's no dummy, and I would just assume he not know exactly what we're gonna do before we do it. Um. Because this isn't gonna be like, we're gonna send a SWAT team to Cole's house to pull him out of his bed, right? We, I mean, if we, if we file a complaint, he's gonna get served with a complaint, but. I would not like his lawyer to know. I would not like his lawyer to know what arguments we talked about and how we talked about. Um, dealing with his arguments. Uh, yeah.
So then if he does, say he goes forward and he can be fined just as many dollars as the county wants to finance, anything?
Well. All of this is dependent on a judge, it's not dependent on me or the Board of Supervisors or Mister Anderson. It, it would be in the hands of a judge if we went forward with a court case, uh, that judge would be the magistrate. Who, um. He lives in Fort Dodge, so. It's not somebody that. Yeah, I mean, it probably should make us all feel better that it's not a local resident that. May have a dog in this fight, or we're gonna get somebody that. Lives in town in Fort Dodge that probably hasn't thought about Corey's his entire life. Um, which is who I would much rather deal with here than. Than somebody that. Like knows Mister Anderson or, or knows all of you, cause they probably have to withdraw, we get a new judge anyway. Our magistrate's pretty good. But the idea would be we would go to the magistrate, make our arguments, and then he would decide. And if he decided for us or against us, most likely what we'd ask is for an injunction, right, cause. We, we can find him, we can, if we were to get. A win. And we could ask to fine him for like fifty days or whatever. Um, if he has an endless supply of money, it's not gonna make any difference. We just want it stopped, if, if the argument is he can't do this, then we'd wanna stop it.
So can he just appeal that and keep it on, and just draw this process out for years?
Well. Uh, in theory, yes, but, uh. An appeal from a magistrate goes to the District Court, so that's local here. And then an appeal from District Court goes to the Court of Appeals. Um, that would take a while. An appeal to the Court of Appeals probably take nine to twelve months, okay? And how the appellate system works in Iowa, this is probably, I don't know if this is more than you wanna know or not, but. If you appeal a District Court ruling, you appeal directly to the Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court decides whether they take it or gets assigned in the Court of Appeals, typically, it's assigned to the Court of Appeals. I've had some that were assigned directly to the Supreme Court, this would probably be assigned to the Court of Appeals. If the Court of Appeals made a decision, then you would ask for. Discretionary review with the Iowa Supreme Court, which means they don't have to take it, but they can.
But during all that process, he could just continue with what he's doing, he can start blow.
It would depend on the outcome, okay, so. If he won, then yes. During that process, he could operate as though he won, until there was a decision saying he lost. If he lost, then. We would, mostly this decision just stays in effect, so he would be in a holding better. It matters if you win or lose.
Right.
Just like in a criminal case, if you. Win your appeal, um. You get released from prison if you're in prison, but not. Not if you don't. Okay, or. You know, sometimes you can appeal and post a bond, but here, the magistrate's decision would stay in effect until District Court ruled. That would stay in effect until the Court of Appeals ruled if they ever. Okay.
So essentially, there's nothing stopping them from starting to go after him.
Well.
You can throw some fines at him.
Right, I mean, just like there's nothing stopping anybody from digging for oil or whatever, um. Yes, we have rules, we have ordinances, but. Um, yeah, we also have people that don't pay attention to any of those, so.
Or as long as you got work, could work for appeals, you can just keep it.
Well, um, maybe. But I, I think that's pretty far afield, so I don't know. Um, and we depend on if he won or lost. So if he lost, I don't think he'd be able to operate until his appeals were done, if he won, then yeah, I think he'd be able to go right away. Um. But I think the plan would be to try to address this before he starts blowing things up, right, cause that's. My guess is that's everybody's concern is the boiling, like boiling things up, dynamite, whatever you use to blow up rocks, I don't even know. So.
So all kinds of aspects we're worried about.
But. Was that a kind of a big, what else, what else?
Safety, truck safety, vehicle safety, you know, trucks on the road, we had a lot of kids that are riding mopeds, doing stuff like that, so safety is a huge concern. Dust control, which. Uh, was a big concern, I think drainage, I don't think you can just. Say we're just gonna take the nap and flow over to these other quarries and out the river, I don't think that's right, I mean, there's a lot of things I think. We're concerned about, noise.
Forty semis a day going around them curves that are dangerous now?
Our wells, our real estate value.
Real estate value, wells.
Have a very long list.
Air health from dust.
Just the overall enjoyment of our property. That wasn't happening.
Semi's go by now.
Yeah.
And then to more than double that with, you know, roots has small grandchildren that are outside. I mean, I've never seen kids play outside as much as you used to, but to have it right there in front of their house. That's what scares Kevin and I the most.
Okay.
Cause he has grandkids.
Look at how close that dam is, look at, money being put into that campground, cause they wanna go camp and sit there and listen to rock getting ground up? Do I want him to sit out my deck and listen to rock getting ground up?
Or stand outside by campfire and have the dust just in waves come at you?
There's really nothing good about any of it, it's not just the blasting.
And then could it have a, an effect on maybe the city's water or the, you know, the Humble Dam, I mean, I don't know, that's. There's a lot.
Yeah, and I, I, and I don't know the interest of any of those, I have, I have no idea.
I think the biggest thing is, is there's so many unknowns. Definitely, what are we leaving for our children to deal with?
Not all of that ordinance, or fourteen, I think it was, or something like that.
And he has much larger plans than just what he owns right now, so how big is, how big do we want this to be for Humble? I mean, he's, he's got intentions that go way beyond what he owns right now. I know that because he told me for Sam.
Okay.
So he's, there's a whole lot of land he wants to buy and eventually mine, so.
Our lives will never be the same now if this happens. Our lives will change forever. We'll never have that quiet moment.
Humble County is gonna be a lovely county after this, if he does it.
Stripping it naked.
We're a small county anyway, and for him to do that, it's gonna take a lot of that away.
And it drops our property values like we think it will, that affects how our property values go down, which means our taxes go down.
I think it already has, if I would have tried to sell my house two months ago. I could have gotten more than what I could get right now, cause who would wanna buy it right now?
Right.
So we've already lost property value quite a bit, considerably of that, I mean, I haven't checked that out, but. It's just common sense, you know, who's gonna buy it, there's a quarry about to be happening two blocks from us, nobody's gonna want it. Why would anybody get anywhere, touch that with a ten-foot pole, you know, I wouldn't have, I've only been there just under two years, I wouldn't have bought it. And when that was a quarry, none of those houses were there, Rutland was there obviously, but none of the. Houses in that division were there, or I think my house was the first one built nineteen seventy-seven, and that quarry stopped being mined in the, I don't know, in sixties?
Fifty-five.
So, none of that was in question the last time it was mined, now there's people's lives that are in question. And his, Cole's opinion is that he doesn't do it someone else well, he has. Evidently for him, he had knowledge that there's another company that will come in and they will do that, regardless of if we stop it.
And I, and I think that's hearsay, cause.
Well, he told that to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
He's trying to scare us.
Yeah.
Division, because I've seen, I've talked to someone who's done it, so I've actually used to work with them, so.
Randy says that he's got eighteen appeals right now.
Eighteen appeals, okay.
But short term.
You don't want a technicality or a not door deal, right?
Not, not the end result, but at least get it back in front of the Board of Adjusters, proper process going.
So that it's fair and lawful to all of the people that, that, that the law should be protecting, him and us. I don't think that's happening right now.
Another thing he talked about at that Board of Adjustments meeting was different things, that he was gonna ensure our wells, or. He'd let somebody come into our house and videotape our basements, and if we had a problem, he would pay for it, he was saying he'd do all this. You put this back where it can be done, he said that he doesn't do, sell this, and then everybody's out, I mean, he's gonna put all this money down to everybody. I mean, that was my worry is. That all of a sudden he just sells it to this bigger company, makes money on it, and then there's no rules at all, it's just that company can do whatever the hell they want. So just. Just thought.
By that point, it's out of everybody's hands, so.
Well, I think those. When you talk about that, that could be, and again, we're getting into, we don't know if this is gonna happen or not, but. As far as the Board of Adjustment goes, if he asks for the special exception use permit. And they were granted, they could put in there. That promise he made.
But then if he sells it to another company, that would all go off the window.
They would be, they would be under the same conditions. As, as Mister Anderson would be, the, that's one thing.
Stuff there where he says this sells, it's still part of another company and then all that comes out together.
It. The other company, the next company would be subject to the same conditions as Mister Anderson.
I just thought it was a sales budget, it was hard to make people feel better, and I think it made anybody feel better, wanting to have to make them in their basement, take a picture of their foundation.
Well, no, probably not.
And how binding is that word then?
Well.
And then you have to go through all the loops and hoops of proving that it was, they, they're the ones that caused the situation to happen.
And this doesn't need to happen in general, we just need to follow what we need to do, do the right steps.
That's where we're at right now is to. Plan and see where we get.
Can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
This is Randy Cracklow, I apologize, I couldn't be there, my wife and I have been sick. And I've, I've been listening to most of this. And the eighteen letters of appeal that I received. Were based on Article eighteen and Section three. And I have a call in from, uh, as Dave, uh, Lee had given me a name, Christie Harshberger. At ISAC, I'm trying to find out whether or not. Uh, the Board of Adjustments. Which is no longer really in existence. If the Board of Supervisors can act as the Board of Adjustments. If you read section, section three. And I'm, this is my interpretation, but it needs to be verified. The appeal is for the process, which I have received eighteen of those. And. Also, the second paragraph of that says that there is a stay in all proceedings. And so that also has to be interpreted. So at this point in time, arguments, not that they're not all valid. They really are irrelevant right now, those arguments were taken at the first hearing. But the first hearing is Nolan Boyd.
Boyd.
But those arguments would have to be brought to the, uh, to the next hearing. And the hearing would take place just like the first one. And we would follow the procedures of contact to the newspaper and those within five hundred feet of adjoining properties. Again, the, uh, verification has to come on Section three. The appeal is for the procedure. Which obviously, because there was not a legitimate board, the procedure had a, had a flaw in it. And so until there's an actual, uh, I guess advisement. Uh, or a, a lawyer or Mister Beatty, whoever, um. Would give advice on that section. Uh. The way I read it, nothing can go forward. As far as getting a Board of Adjustment members. That would really take a lot of time of vetting. And also, uh, would take, uh, a great deal of, uh, uh, effort in finding those people. Especially under these circumstances. So. My discussion here is basically. Section three of Article eighteen needs to be verified and how we proceed from there. And so I'm, I apologize again that I could not be there. Uh, my wife and I have been sick for five or six days, so didn't wanna come and expose anybody.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
That's, that's my input.
Well, like we stated, uh. We need to. Figure out what we're gonna do and. Where we're going from here.
Well, if I heard him, Randy Crackley, he's checking with Christie to see if the Board of Supervisors could be the next.
Right.
Ones to hear.
Right.
And then we would rule. Right, John? Is that the way you listen to that?
Yeah.
When I talked to her, she said that's what would happen, is the Board of Supervisors, but we gotta get. Well, legally, we gotta figure out, is that the truth? Christie is the ISAC. Which covers all the state, all the counties, uh, we give advice from them. And they do the training and everything for the supervisors and everybody else that's elected. So, um, that's why we're going to them to see where we're legally at. John gives us advice. John's more of a local lawyer, and we need somebody that. Is familiar and with these rulings, but. If we have to, we'll go outside counsel with somebody that deals with this stuff and still. We need to talk to John and find out where we're at in our next plan, that's where we're at.
Thank you, guys. You're welcome back anytime.
You say that now.
Well, I'm just saying, our door is always open, but if it's closed, it usually has a note on it that, that you can't come in, but other than that, we're here.
Appreciate everybody coming in. Up to you, I guess.
I, I didn't realize.
Do you have?
We did John at all, fair enough, but we didn't.
I, I, in all honesty. I'm sitting out there going, how's a lot of people here? But I'm like, wait a minute, Ben, what is this for?
Do you have court today?
Um, I do at eleven.
You want, Ben said he'd switch sponsors.
Of all of Ben's, he's very gracious. Thank you, Ben. If not, yeah, I'll try to go quick.
Well, then when Trish comes back, we'll just switch to spot out.
Okay, this is.
Ben can come back and we'll do it.
Everybody will have to load here.
Ben is gonna switch with. John. You guys.
We will, yeah. I can stay, stay till we go.
Well, I, I didn't know Ben.
Yeah, he'll come back. All right, both I got.
Do we need a motion?
We do.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session, Iowa Code twenty-one, twenty-five dash one.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh.
Nine twenty.
Everybody leave and.
Trish, do you want me to call yourself?
Yeah, that's fine.
I have a question. Can, can Randy Cracklow be included in this little session by phone?
That's fine.
I think he should be.
Yeah.
Randy? Are you available by phone?
Yes.
So you can be included in this by phone, not by Zoom.
What? Hey.
Are you in a cave, Randy?
It's my man cave.
Okay.
Literal, literal cave.
Yeah.
Tell it to the auditor's office, would you?
Yeah, you can call my phone.
Randy?
Yes.
Call into the auditor's office, we'll get you on speaker on there.
Okay.
Trish, make sure you close the owl.
Yeah.
Hello?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna let you go on the phone then.
Okay, bye.
Alright, thank you.
Randy gone.
Randy's not here.
Randy's, the sun came up and Randy's man cave.
Okay, we're all back on. Eric's requesting a short recess.
Give me just a minute also.
We can hang up.
Do that.
I guess it hung up already, Randy already hung up the phone.
Yeah, he's, he's still on.
But he was on this phone while we were. How about this weather? I'd take this though spring and couple of rain.
All week.
We get a, well, almost ten days.
It's bound to be. A cold winter, but mild.
Yeah.
Well, look at your squirrel's nest. If they're in next to the truck, it's gonna be a hellacious winter.
They're out on the branches.
They're way high and they're way up in the air on the small branch.
They get to swing, aren't they?
If they're out on the low branches, it's gonna be no snow or loads.
I thought they were calling for a lot of snow.
If they get way up, it's gonna be mild, but there'll be some snow.
So where are they at?
They're way up on the top.
We're swinging there.
Way up in the top.
It's gonna be mild and some snow.
It sounds good to me. I've gone by the squirrels for years and they haven't been very wrong.
I got a couple of my yard I'd bring to you and you can.
My wife won't have to take care of them to eat them. What are you trying to do, squirrels? Want us more?
I got eight more.
I come alive. Well, you never ate squirrel? Yeah, not much. I'm all one of those guys. Well, I haven't too. Well, let's, let's have a honey. Nobody alone, you didn't, and I guarantee it'll kill a squirrel.
Chicken.
Okay, is everybody back? We're back out of closed session. At this time, no action was taken. We discussed strategy.
Okay.
Okay, back to Ben.
Mr. Ben.
We're an hour and forty-five minutes late, but, but, yeah, thanks, Ben. Thank you, that helped.
Well, I figured otherwise John would be.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
First item that I've got on the agenda is to approve voucher number nine. This is the sub-final voucher for Dixon Construction for the bridge down on Lone Tree, Lone Tree Road. For sixty-three hundred fourteen dollars and seventy cents. This pays out the silt fence, the seeding and fertilization, and the mulch for the project. So everything's, everything's paid for now except for the retainage down at the bottom.
Twenty-three, two forty-three, fifty-nine.
Right, and that'll be paid out no sooner than thirty days from now after the DOT has done our, our audit. They've come out, they reviewed the project, but now they, they audit all the paperwork. Their materials engineers come in and, and audit all of the material that was used on the bridge.
Well, if we go back to when this thing started, remember our comments or does anybody know anything about Dixon Construction? And they're coming from a long way away and we were nervous.
We were.
They did a, in my opinion, they did an awesome job. They did good work, they timely, so.
Everybody that visited the site commended how clean and organized it was while they were out there. I mean, they picked up their trash, they.
The only people that were mad were the people that lived out there that.
That didn't want to see it open back up.
They didn't want it open back up. The traffic slowed way down and nobody coming through there, so.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this sixty-six thousand three hundred fourteen dollars and seventy cents at this point.
And I'd say I think that.
And I do have the item of discussion or just a question. Do we really pay attention to the percent complete on the right-hand side?
We do.
Because there would be my discussion item. The reinventing the classy riprap is a little over eighty-one percent. Does that mean are we going to be adding some?
No.
Or just came in under.
We utilized the broken up concrete from the old arch. For riprap, it's a non-pay item for them, but then they didn't have to pay to get rid of it. They were able to break it up in similar sizes.
Okay.
And use it down low along the bank on either side as opposed to what we purchased.
Okay, so that these percentages would stand to be correct then at this point?
Yes.
Because some of them are over. That one's a little under. But we did not go over budget on this.
No, our, our budget was, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand and we're just over at seven seventy-four.
Okay, about ten thousand.
About ten thousand over. So, but we did quite a bit more clearing and grubbing.
I see that.
And then some seeding and fertilization.
Right, because I mean, that's why I asked if the percentage was something to kind of follow along the additional work. Yep. Okay, that's all I got. Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Paul's carried.
The second item that I've got on for the agenda is to approve voucher number one, which will also be our sub-final voucher. This is for Taliar's Bridge Replacement with double box covert on Kentucky Avenue between one hundred and fiftieth and one hundred and sixtieth street. This pays for everything but the retainage on the project. I don't know if you guys have been out there to take a look at it. They did a good, they did a good job.
Yeah, yeah, good. Relatively quick work too on that one.
Yep.
And that is nice. Therefore, I would make a motion that we approve that. But we're doing the three hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seven cents.
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Paul's carried.
The third item that I've got on the agenda is to approve an application to work in the counties right-of-way for B and S tiling and excavation. This is part of the ag drainage well closure project that you guys have going on over in Weaver Township. Their intention is to remove the eighteen-inch culvert that runs underneath the roadway and replace that with a twenty-four-inch culvert under the roadway.
Will they cut that?
It's gravel, they'll just open, open.
Delaware ad.
Yes, it's under Delaware, just south of Highway three.
Okay, and it says in the newly constructed ditch on the west side of the road.
Yes.
Where is said ditch?
Private property.
Okay.
So originally, yep, so the back of our right-of-way will be a berm and then their ditch.
Okay.
Will begin there.
So the B and S tiling that was hired by the.
That is.
Through the state?
So that's the, that's the low bidder for the ag drainage wall closure project.
So we had nothing to do.
No.
Yeah, we had no selection, this is all part of the IDAL's bid.
Okay, this is clear, obviously fully up to speed and aware of what's going on and.
Yeah, I don't have a timeframe on it yet, but.
They may do it this fall, they may do it next spring.
Yes.
So all their.
And this would be good through whenever they get to it.
Yes.
All of their insurance stuff would be handled through them?
All of their insurance stuff should be handled through.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna let you go on the phone then.
Okay, fine.
All right, thank you.
Randy gone. Sandy's not here.
Randy's the sun came up and Randy's man cave.
It's okay, we're all back on. Eric's requesting a short recess.
Give me just a minute also.
We can hang up. I guess it hung up already, Randy already hung up the phone.
Yeah, he's he's on.
He's still on.
But he was on this phone while we were. How about this weather? I'd take this though spring and couple of rain.
All week.
We get a well, almost ten days it found it like.
It'll be a cold winter, but mild.
Yeah, I'm all for mild.
Well, look at your squirrel's nest. If they're in next to the truck, it's gonna be a hellacious winter.
They're out in the branches.
They're way high and they're way up in the air on the small branch.
They get to swing it, eh?
If they're out on the low branches, it's gonna be no snow or loads.
I thought they were calling for a lot of snow there.
If they get way up, it's gonna be mild, but there there'll be some snow.
So where are they at?
They're way up on the top.
We're gonna swing there totally.
Way up in the top.
Be mild and some smell.
It sounds good to me.
I've gone by the squirrels for years and they haven't been very wrong.
I got a couple of my yard I'd bring to you and you can.
Well, I got him up, the wife won't have to take care of him to eat it. What are you trying to do squirrels? Want us more?
I got eight more.
I come alive squirrel. Well, you never ate squirrel? Um, not much, I'm all.
One of those wild.
And I haven't too. Well, let's let's have a honey. Nobody alone, he doesn't, and I guarantee he'll kill a squirrel.
Chicken.
Okay, is everybody back? We're back out of closed session. Uh, at this time, no action was taken. Uh, we discussed strategy.
Okay.
Okay, back to Ben.
Mr. Ben.
All right, we're an hour and forty-five minutes late, but but thanks, Ben, thank you, that helped.
Well, I figured otherwise John would be.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Uh, first item that I've got on the agenda is to approve voucher number nine, this is the sub final voucher for Dixon Construction for the bridge down on Lone Tree, uh, Lone Tree Road. For sixty-three hundred fourteen dollars and seventy cents. This pays out the silt fence, uh, the seeding and fertilization and the mulch for the project, so everything's everything's paid for now except for the retainage down at the bottom.
Twenty-three, two forty-three, fifty-nine.
Right, and that'll be paid out, uh, no sooner than thirty days from now after the DOT has done our our audit. They've come out, they reviewed the project, but now they they audit all the paperwork. Uh, their materials engineers come in and and audit all of the material that was used on the bridge.
Further here. Yeah, well, if we go back to when this thing started, um, remember our comments or does anybody know anything about Dixon Construction and they're coming from a long way away and we were nervous.
We were.
They did a, in my opinion, they did an awesome job, they did good work, they timely, um, so.
Everybody that visited the site commended how clean and organized it was while they were out there, I mean, they picked up their trash, they.
Awesome, the only people that were mad were the people that lived out there that.
That didn't want to see it open back up, they didn't want it open back up.
The traffic slowed way down and nobody coming through there, so.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this sixty, uh, six thousand two hundred fourteen dollars and seventy cents at this point.
Okay.
And I'd second that.
And I do have the item of discussion or just a question. Do we really pay attention to the percent complete on the right hand side?
We do.
Because there would be my discussion item. The reinventing the classy rip rap is a little over eighty-one percent, does that mean are we gonna be adding some?
No.
Or this came in under.
We
With the waters?
We utilized, uh, the broken up concrete from the old arch for rip rap, it's a non-pay item for them, but then they didn't have to pay to get rid of it. They were able to break it up in similar sizes and use it, uh, down low along the bank on either side as opposed to what we purchased.
Okay, so that these percentages would stand to be correct then at this point?
Yes.
Cause some of them are over.
Mm-hmm.
That one's a little under. But we did not go over budget on.
No, no, our uh, our budget was, uh, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand and we're just over at seven seventy-four.
Okay, about ten thousand.
About ten thousand over. So, but we did quite a bit more clearing and grubbing and then
See that.
That added, uh, uh, some seeding and fertilization.
Like, cause I mean, that's why I asked if the percentage, if there's something to kind of follow along the additional work.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I got. Okay, we had a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All carried.
The second item that I've got on for the agenda is to approve voucher number one, which will also be our sub final voucher. Uh, this is for Taliers Bridge Replacement with Double Box Culvert on Kentucky Avenue between one hundred and fiftieth and one hundred and sixtieth street. This pays for everything but the retainage on the project. Um, I don't know if you guys have been out there to take a look at it. They did a good, they did a good job.
Yeah, yeah, it looks nice. Relatively quick work too on that one.
Yep.
And that is nice. Uh, therefore I would make a motion that we approve that. But we're doing the three hundred twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seven cents.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All carried.
The third item that I've got on the agenda is to approve an application to work in the counties right of way for B and S tiling and excavation. This is part of the ag drainage well closure project that you guys have going on over in Weaver Township. Uh, their intention is to remove the eighteen inch culvert that runs underneath the roadway and replace that with a twenty-four inch culvert under the roadway.
Will they cut that?
Uh, it's gravel, they'll just open.
Turn the Delaware add.
Yes, it's under Delaware, just south of, uh, Highway three.
Okay.
And says in the newly constructed ditch on the west side of the road.
Yes.
Where is said ditch?
Uh, private property.
Okay.
So, uh, originally, yep, so the back of our right of way will be a berm and then their ditch.
Okay.
Will begin there.
So the B and S tiling that was hired by the.
That is.
Through the state.
So that's the, that's the low bidder for the ag drainage wall closure project.
So we had nothing to do.
No.
Yeah, we had no selection, this is all part of the, uh, Idell's bid.
Okay.
You're obviously fully up to speed and aware of what's going on and.
Yeah, I don't have a timeframe on it yet, but.
They do it this fall, they may do it next spring.
Yes.
So all their.
And this would be good through whenever they get to it.
Yes.
They're permitted.
All of their insurance stuff would be handled through them?
All of their insurance stuff should be handled through, uh, Terry should have a copy of it as well as Idell's.
Perfect. With the make a motion.
Second. Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All carried.
The, where are we on fourth project or the fourth item that I've got on the agenda? Is to approve an application to work in the right of way for Lumen, uh, formerly Century Link. Uh, this is the contractor that Rick mentioned last week that was digging without a permit. Um, between Rick's property and, um, Parles on Lone Tree Road, you can see multiple locations where they have dug in the road ditch as well as an open hole right now.
Yes.
Um, going out to the project site last Monday, uh, the contractor was out there doing some repair work on the tile, but they did not have a permit. I sent an email to them as well as the rest of you on Monday notifying them that they were working in the right of way without a permit. And the penalty according to our ordinance was two hundred and fifty dollars per day from the date of instance. Um, they filled out a permit and got it back to me Tuesday. So um, the hole is still open. My suggestion would be to find.
So they have start, stop, no, they.
Start would be, in my opinion, would be Friday when they started digging. Uh, stop date could be today or it could be last Tuesday when I received a permit.
Um, how many days are we talking?
Well, you'd be talking four if you stopped it on last Tuesday.
Sorry.
You're fine, you'd be talking, uh, what, ten? If you chose today as your end date, so you're looking at either a thousand dollar fine or twenty-five hundred dollar fine.
Well, the thing is, isn't it that, um, we have to approve it before it's a valid permit, correct?
Correct.
So shouldn't it be from the date that we tell we approve it?
I'm fine with that, I mean, I can argue it either way, I can guarantee you if we dug in the road ditch without calling in a locate and we hit the utility, we would get a bill.
Yep.
Oh, we.
So.
Big guy.
Can you imagine hitting a fiber optic?
Oh.
That's like ten thousand an hour.
So, so in.
Crazy money.
In, in my opinion, the only way that these contractors are going to start paying attention to the permitting process is if you make it hurt.
That's right.
The same way that they make it hurt us when we dig without locates.
Right. I would say start it today.
It's a different story when we have a local guy doing it and they know, they call, they do the permit, but when you don't, when you just go up there and dig, I think step down on it and do it.
Yep, I agree.
Okay. I'll work on an invoice and send it off with the permit.
How much he's gonna find him per day?
It's two hundred and fifty dollars a day.
Did you make them aware that they were in violation?
Yes.
And then was the time, I hope they changed names, is that what? Is that the one I read?
Uh, it was Century Link, they're now Lumen, but they had a subcontractor that does their digging, they just do the the cable repair, so they're doing one of these, pointing at everybody.
It doesn't really make any difference if you're a contractor or a subcontractor who ever worked in a right of way, you know you need a permit.
Right.
If they're doing that kind of work, they know they're supposed to be, you know, doing it.
Every county in the state of Iowa requires a work in the right of way.
Exactly, so they knew it, they were just being blatantly disregarding it.
Yep, or somebody just had a bad day and forgot.
We do the, we do that, but would we need to approve it now?
So we would approve it now, today.
Okay, and everything's now in order.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we've got copies of their application, their insurance.
Just a week late.
Yeah, about two weeks late.
Two weeks late, so then I'll make a motion to approve today.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
As long as we go ahead with the fine.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The fifth and sixth items kind of tie in together. Um, so Logistics Group is working with H W P Rigging to move a Mid-American Transformer from Des Moines up to, um, New Hampton. It will be one of the largest loads that I've ever seen come through Humboldt County at three hundred and eighty thousand pounds.
Wow.
Um, their plan is to go up Highway one sixty-nine, they've been negotiating with Union Pacific Railroad to get them to turn their, um, flashing beacons on the railroad crossing up by the Bowe Livermore Corner. They have cantilevered arms on them right now, so they hang over the roadway themselves.
Right.
And U P would need to turn those for this load to fit through, it's twenty foot tall, eighteen foot wide. Um, two hundred and ten foot long and twenty axes.
Good lord.
So.
And this is just passing through.
So this is passing through, but the problem is, is they're finding U P to be difficult to work with, just like the rest of us.
Yeah.
Uh, so they would like to reroute on one hundred and fortieth street turn and go up Montana Avenue and then come back west past Eric's Place back to one sixty-nine.
Past their new bridge.
Uh, past the, the new bridge on the gravel road, but they're planning on turning on the blacktop and going across the double box culvert that we installed on the roadway there here, maybe five years ago. Uh, we did send that in to Chuck Britson to have them evaluate whether this load would pass or not, and they said that it would. Uh, the fee for that will be paid for by Logistics as part of the moving permit. Um, these are applications to work in the right of way to fill in the road ditch with one inch roadstone so they can make the corners.
Well, to then they'll tear it back out.
And then the preliminary agreement is we'll tear it out and we get to keep all the rock they.
Oh.
So.
If something happens to one of the culverts or something they're going over, are they responsible for fixing it then?
Yes, so I've got notes on, um, I think, on their move, must be on their moving permit, I'm not seeing it on here. Um, that states that any damage to any, uh, any culverts or the roadway itself will be on them as the permittee, that if they choose to take our route, they're responsible for any and all damages.
Okay, good, good.
And where are they going with this?
They're basically making a loop, uh, so their end destination is New Hampton, east of Charles City. And
It's a nice place.
We are the last hurdle. Um, in getting this move.
Oh, they do go from one sixty-nine to Highway eighteen?
Uh, yeah, that's their plan.
How many times was it again?
Three hundred and eighty thousand or three hundred and eighty thousand pounds, so a hundred and ninety thousand ton, was it a hundred and ninety tons?
I don't know, these engineers sometimes have trouble with numbers.
Yeah, I'm trying to do it on the fly.
Uh, so really the only structure, you know, Sandy mentioned it, uh, is that double box culvert.
So you got the double box culvert and then you got a couple of, yes, you've got a couple of under the road culverts.
Right.
Twenty-four inch culverts, so those will all get inspected this afternoon. Uh, I'll take photos of every one of them, take photos of the roadway and then after they come through, which their plan is either tomorrow afternoon or Wednesday, they'll be coming through Humboldt.
Okay.
Uh, at that time, we'll re-inspect them after the load goes through.
So they will dump essentially rock in the right of way. Make the corners.
Yep, so they gotta.
They get back out.
Yes.
And keep it.
Yes.
Are you good with all that?
Yep.
Are you fine with your inspecting and you already read that if there is, say there's a twenty-four inch crossroad culvert?
They'll get.
Damage, they'll pay for you to fix it.
Yep. So. That's part of their understanding if they accept and and use, uh, the moving permit that I signed Thursday.
Here's a question on that. Speaking of all the good work that secondary roads does in replacing said culverts were needed.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they pay for that, but obviously it's not a culvert that was on the list of things to replace. Is there any damages involved?
What do you mean?
They damaged it and they're taking time away from whatever else everybody's doing right now, yes, they'll pay their wages, but they're not paying any damages, they're just, it's just a wash essentially.
We're not gonna make money.
We're not gonna make any money.
No, we, we went through all, so I don't know how many hours I spent dealing with this last week, we did all of this for a thirty-five dollar moving permit.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Bruce follows it, I mean.
Yeah, there's.
I doubt that they're gonna bother the, the brand new cement culverts and he did with, you do diligence, check with the bridge company, the load rating. But, you know, uh, on a central gravel secondary road and a twenty-four inch cement culvert and something that weighs an ungodly amount of, you know, I'm just using worst case scenario, it does for your inspection, it cracks it. It has to be replaced, sure, they'll pay whatever, but we didn't, you know, that's not on our list of to do things, that's an extra project that's gonna take a couple of days probably to replace a twenty-four inch crossroad culvert, they don't pay, they damaged it, they pay to fix it, that's it.
Well, this is my question and I don't.
So they paid for time and material.
Right, they'll, they'll, it won't cost the county anything, but we don't, not that we're trying to make money off permits, but thirty-five dollars.
Yeah.
But my question, when we did out here, when they did their substation or junction or whatever it is, I'll be with them. And they tore through tile.
Right.
And we said, somebody damaged our tile. Wasn't us. My question is, is they're trying to deal with railroad and they want to avoid the railroad, so they're gonna come to us and say, would you do this? I just pardon me, wants to say, just wait for the railroad, but I know they want to get this up there in decent weather.
Hmm.
And knowing a couple of truck drivers, I can only imagine twenty axles trying to get it around a couple of miles and turn it and that big a load and.
So they, they tried pushing this through last week, they wanted, uh, me to call an emergency board session to, to pass these applications to work in the right of way and they're moving permit and I told them, no. Uh, my response was after everything that Mid-American had done and hasn't done for Humboldt County in the past year, I can't see anybody on the board being willing to make this emergency move and I talked to Rick, uh, about the Lumen permit and since I was on the phone with him, I, I ran that by him with everything that happened with Bitsums and us still waiting for them to move poles down on Gotch Park, like they haven't really helped us out much. So why should we bend over backwards and have an emergency session when it's not an emergency for us?
Right.
Yep.
That's my question. This is a Mid-American, uh, project?
Indirectly. It's their transformer.
The logistics group moving it.
So talking to a former roommate of mine from school who works for Mid-American, this thing was supposed to be sitting in New Hampton today. And it's just now leaving Des Moines today. So they're behind. And they're pointing at anybody that they can for why, they're blaming U P for why they're behind. They're blaming Humboldt County for not doing emergency permit for why they're behind, it's.
Do they need other counties to do the same thing?
Well, I'm assuming so, but I, I don't know that.
Well, I'm guessing they're gonna have to jump off it up at Algonia to go around, they can't get underneath the trussel.
No.
Yeah, um, uh, one sixty-nine, they can't.
This might not be their last turn.
Well, they might already have those worked out, like their plan was they were going through where U P was at until U P quit conversations with them.
They don't care.
Right.
Yeah, they probably. What if we didn't care, what if we were the.
They'd probably go up to one hundred and fiftieth street in Cassuth County and go across to Blacktop and then go back north.
Yep.
No.
You know, not to say that I probably hurt anybody feeling about that mountain road, but something tells me if they agree to that, they'd be paying for it.
Yeah, oh yeah, they'd be paying whatever.
They'd be paying whatever they told them.
Whatever they told them the cost was for them.
Not just to send somebody out and move the crossing arms out of the way.
Right.
They'd be, uh, telling them, well, yeah, you're gonna pay for that and you're gonna pay whatever they said.
Well, this will be something led by several DOT officers and people behind and keeping them off bridges because when they're oh, it's something that big, they can't really be one on at a time.
That's huge.
Span is huge, so.
I don't know, I just, like I said, yeah, I, I don't doubt the agreement is if something gets broke, they'll fix it, but you know what, that's what I'm saying, it takes time away from, you know, the other projects that can be done under nice weather, you'd have to go fix that, but like, wow, I crushed that aisle.
Hmm.
You know, we'll go out and fix it, yeah, you didn't.
Well, if they break it, they pay for the fixment.
They're paying to fix it, but we didn't break it and most of the, all those structures on that.
Well, I mean, we could, we can add on whatever an overtime fee, you know, above and beyond saying that this was you know, shifted in priority, but I mean, we're not the railroad, we can't say you're, we're gonna charge you twenty thousand plus whatever our cost is.
Yeah. And I mean, that, this is worst case scenario, I'm not saying that this won't go with the additional rock in the right of way to make the turn and go down the road, route, get back on the highway and continue on their journey, that it's gonna hurt a thing.
Right.
And I guess one subliminal benefit is some one inch roadstone, I believe you said.
Right.
And you can clean that out good and utilize that someplace else then.
It'll be similar to your circular or circus type atmosphere when it comes down, I mean, it's gonna be huge coming down the road.
It is. And, uh, they're aware of the road construction going on in Humboldt and they've talked to the contractor with that, cause they're gonna have to move all of their, move all their pylons and their sign and get the load through and then move everything back in.
I mean, right during Humboldt's rush hour traffic, that'd be huge.
Yeah.
It is, yeah. Well, I mean, you feel, obviously you're gonna keep an exceedingly close eye on this.
Right.
Are you all right with it?
Yeah, it's, it's fine.
But there again, to our fall concerns of if something, God forbid, gets screwed up that we get highly compensated for repairing it.
Deal.
Okay, I need a motion for section twenty-four Delana Township, section nineteen Humboldt Township, put them both in one. Well, Ben's eagle eye on this project, I'll make the motion that we do approve that.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't want my very nice, uh, crossing, the little hill screwed up.
Right.
I don't want to hook my power.
Yeah. Load.
And this is a transformer.
Eighteen foot wide, so basically they're gonna.
They're gonna go right down.
Right, right down the road. Look at this, look, they got a pusher front and back.
Yeah.
You know, when I worked with Smithway, they had a, we had a load going across Highway twenty. The load got four dogs, so the guy jumped off, ran up to the terminal to get fuel and he got fined for leaving the route. And it was going two miles out to get fuel.
Wow.
But that's a big box.
Yeah. Like I said, this is the biggest that I've ever seen coming through.
Must be a lot of.
Whatever.
Is that like a transformer?
It's gonna be a catch for all, yeah, that's one.
So would that be, uh, that wouldn't even have, would. So would that be uh, that wouldn't even have, would they have liquid in that already or would they fill?
Probably oil. That'd already be full of oil.
Wow, that's crazy.
Wouldn't you like to drive in one of those?
No.
You would not.
I have to take the back one, but I don't know, it wouldn't be the front one. I don't know how many.
Yeah, a lot of copper in that thing.
Lot of uh buttons you'd have to push to try to lift the axle or turn anything.
Yes.
A copper winding.
Take you a long time to pump tires.
Anything else? That was about it.
That, that's, that's plenty, I feel like.
Yeah, I'm glad, I feel the same way.
Okay. All right. That is all I have.
So we're ready for every. I see our motor was on there.
Uh, so yeah, the machine is back. We had the replacement motor and the. Seals on the final drive, one of the seals was leaking, uh, so while we had it all pulled apart. We had them replace the seals that added another. Six, seven thousand. Most of it was all labor. But uh. Yeah, that's all done and back. Um. We are trying to finish up and button up the projects that we've got going as far as the roads that were. In the process of regrading or blading the material out in the field. Um. We're gonna try and finish out this week by. Flipping off work orders that we got. Uh, repairing tile, repairing crosspipes, mowing back slopes. Won't be long, we'll be driving fence posts and. Trying to put in uh. Some snow fence.
E L T is already doing it.
Well, this week could be a good week. It's not too often you put up snow fence in the T-shirt.
Do you know that this is? Normal?
Yeah. Next week, that twenty degrees disappears.
It's gonna go back to normal.
Yeah.
You know what the normal high is right now? Forty-three degrees.
Yeah, that'll be next.
Average normal high. Um. I'm gonna need it this term, but don't forget to give me maps of all these nice.
I've got it on my desk.
Not so. Don't eat it today, don't eat it this week.
Yep.
And then any previous, like some of the ones like uh even last year. Like uh with.
Oh.
Uh, that really curvy thing.
The Rutland looking winding road.
Anything and not even last year that comes to your memory or that you know they've done. You've got all of the birch uh. Whatever two ten.
Yep.
All which it goes to be this year, but that's gonna help immensely.
Yep, I can get that all to you.
Don't, don't drop what you're doing. It's, I don't need, I won't go through that process, go, well, honestly, probably. Somewhat in in December because I gotta get a number for the weekend bill budget, so.
I'll have it here by the end of the week.
Oh, you don't have to. You're actually one of the few people I don't have to repeat myself to, but.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, man. Thanks for switching and sticking around.
No problem.
Linda. We got some family farm credit?
Yeah, just a few, not too many. Um. These are the new ones. These are the disallowant. Look this allowed.
Coming off?
Yes. Oh, well.
All of the ones that are. Uh. Removed have been notified, right?
They will be.
They will be.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Dave has those. Those are the new ones.
These are the new ones.
If you have any questions.
There's the new ones, very.
And just uh. Seriously, this is just the homestead tax.
No, this is family farm.
Can you explain this?
Uh, if you. Uh, own, own your property, farm your property, you get a. Family farm tax credit in addition to the ag land credit too.
Well, in other words, and like if you're a farmer.
Right.
Anything you own. The.
Or one of your relatives farms that my son, daughters.
Okay, you, so like you per whatever amount of acres, fuckable acres, you get the family farm tax credit.
Yes.
And the homestead is just the homestead that you own.
You live there.
Yeah.
Well, some of these it's coming off and the kids could be doing the farming and could go back on for the kids.
If their children are farming, they would, they would receive the credit.
Right.
The parents would. The reasons for the disallowance are all there. There's one in there where. All the parcels are residential, so. They don't. Qualify.
Would this apply if you were, say, a farmer and maybe obviously didn't saw your ground, but you retired from farming it and you rented it. To a non-relative, then you wouldn't.
Then you wouldn't qualify.
I'm guessing that's what a lot of these end up being. Over the years, I don't know.
It explains on each one what the reason is.
How much is this credit?
I don't know. How much is it? Do you know? Is it a doll? Does it amount to a dollar an acre?
I don't know how that one works. I think I have to look.
Yeah. I can't tell you right offhand. I. Don't know how they calculate it.
Like that one at the bottom there, that this is the seat pass.
Oh, that one.
I always know when he's back.
Well, it looks like everything is in order, even though I can't see him. I'm gonna make the motion to accept.
I have a motion.
Otherwise Linda would say some.
You don't see anything out of order?
No.
Okay.
Uh, they all. Received.
Those farm.
Right, and they received notifications, so. They have the opportunity if they disagree, maybe we, there's something we missed or they. Forgot to tell us or whatever, then they have the opportunity to.
Come in and change it.
Right.
So I'd second change it.
Okay, motion. Now we can discuss it. Any discussion on it? Uh, just a question. If uh someone, and and some of these are stated are deceased. Then obviously you're disallowing it on that. Let's see, what am I trying to say? If uh. You have an owner deceased, but it's still family members farming, how does that work? Family members, you gotta go reapply. The family member would have to reapply. Is that something what Dave said? Is that correct?
Well. Depends on. How does that one, is that one in particular?
Well, just uh, okay, I think Dave's probably correct that, yeah, it was taken off and it looks like it. Probably was either transferred, you know, inherited or purchased by the owner. So they, they, no, different one, but they would have uh probably reapply on their own, yeah.
And they could have already.
They could, yeah, it's just taken off. Maybe this is obviously cleans things up every year. Person that she.
Because we have a new one here twice.
Mm-hmm.
Well, no, not twice, but he'd already applied. Uh, the year before or so, and so we had one and we're just. Cleaning up the other.
I imagine that. Yeah, that pretty much answers my. Okay, that's all I got. A motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Both scared.
And these are for you and your list, as you requested, is in there too.
Thank you, Linda.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, except please don't file the auditor. For the report ending September thirtieth.
I'm guessing everything is correct.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the auditor's quarterly report.
Well, I will second.
I'll second.
Or go ahead, Sandy.
No, well, I did.
I have a question. I mean, and I'm not, I don't wanna make anybody mad, but as of uh September thirtieth. And we're in November, is it just because we didn't get it in here? Is that the reason? Cause. Everybody else's quarterly report was several weeks ago.
Correct.
I'm just asking. I don't want anybody mad. Okay.
Because I was preparing for the election.
There you go. I figured that, but I wanna make it sure that people know that. Other things go through this offer, so.
There's your software. Okay, I got a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
There.
Um, back to close second.
Okay, let's move down to committee report.
Yeah, I guess you do that.
All right, well, this past week I had no official extra meetings out there.
I'm looking for my food pantry report for. Last week, um.
We run out by five o'clock.
Oh, my goodness. I I I can't even tell you how fast. The food, it was like, if I can read the numbers here. Diane said there was six thousand one hundred and sixty-five pounds, um, the mobile food pantry. November eighth, they had food for two hundred families. Humboldt uh was, had a hundred and twenty-five. Um, two hundred and eighty-seven total for the numbers for those families. Fif- thirteen veterans. Humboldt Homes had fifty-five. Families with sixty-three members, three veterans. Livermore had thirty-three. Families with seventy-two members, four veterans. They had thirty-two vow volunteers. For a total of a hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and twenty-two. Total number for all of those three entities and then twenty veterans. Um. Like Dave said, in. Less than thirty-five minutes, we had handed out everything. The sad part is, is. And so I think she's going to try and up the number again and see if we can't, you know, provide. A little bit more and a little more and. And um Diane and her group, you know, they take this all personally, but it's like. When we run out of food, we run out of food. It isn't, there's nothing we can do other than start ending up.
Oh, I said so much.
Yeah. So um, long story short, if the group headed all boxed up and it was. Well-run, beautiful day. I'm guessing that on January. What is the next tent? Will be our next day, um. I do have the dates for next year's. We can go over that or give them to the public. Uh, January tenth.
January can.
March thirteenth. May eighth. July tenth. September eleventh. November thirteenth. And January eighth of twenty twenty-five. That seems like a long way away. But um. It was. I think every time they do it, I think we get a little better and a little. Quicker and the people get there a little earlier.
Yeah, the lineup is clear out fairgrounds up the road.
Yeah. The other um thing that I partook uh on Tuesday, um. I went, I got invited by the the. Damn people restoration or save the damn group. Um, got, went down to Des Moines and I had um an opportunity I ju- I didn't, wasn't working, so. I got ahold of Dave and him and I drove down there to listen. Um, and talked with Rick. Because I'm still wondering about the. Where our thirty-five comes down along Fairway and that big pile of sand and. I wanted to ask them down there. Rick said that he was pretty sure we have the ability to go in there and clean that out so that. Knock on wood, if we do have a wet spring. Um. So I asked that question and the uh Nate, one of the guys that was on our phone call that day. Um, said, well, you can apply to. Do that, um, you just gotta go through the right channel. Long story short, we sat and back and forth talked, um. When we got to the end, um, and Dave, you can correct me if I misstate this, but. What they really said was it would make things a lot easier if. This group would get along with that group and you guys could come to some common ground in the middle. And make a decision because. They're hearing from Save the Damn people, the dam or the conservation board is telling them. This other thing and. We're just sitting here trying to be the referee, kind of like. Uh, what I said was, that's what we're doing. So, um, I guess. Long story short, they said you might end up having to try to. If you get something worked out there, and I hate to say this, she did the the money. What was the lady? I don't remember her name, but she said.
She was from the governor's office. She was the governor's liaison or secretary, whatever you call it.
She was there listening as well. Um, she said that if there, there has been more federal money um appropriated. She said, I can't guarantee you that anybody is gonna get X amount of dollars, but she said, you know, if we look at all the avenues and we look at. Different towns and we look at different locations and. And we would. Give you as fair a chance as. Possible, so.
Apply for it.
I guess, long story short, um, that group. Is hopefully getting their ducks in a row to go with, meet with the conservation board and see what. If we can come together on something and have some type of movement forward as opposed to. They make a proposal, they shoot it down. Do you make a proposal? They shoot it down. Sooner or later, it's either gonna have to go to the public and ask the question of, are you willing to do this or aren't you? Cause us refereeing, we're split on the board. So we spent a couple of hours down to the Capitol. Um, it was actually kind of quiet down there, but um. That was. My take on the. Meeting.
Well, we had one representative in there. Uh, I don't remember who the lady was at the end on our side.
The destination Iowa person was in there as well.
Yeah, and Nate is in charge of the fisheries across the state. And then there was two other D N R gals in there. Uh. On the whole thing. Uh, as Bruce said, they said we need to start getting along. We need to get the applications in. And uh. Get everything moving as one group. Get everything moving as one group. Uh, the way I took it, we can move the, the sand and the fill. By a crane or whatever. Uh, with a permit. So, the conservation board needs to make an application for a permit to remove that. So we're legal, uh, as Rick said, I think we can do it through the, the drainage district. But I just assumed, uh, myself personally, get in there and get it moved out. And get water over it so that staphytrines and all that crap don't grow again, and. Basically, that's what it come down to, very good intere- interesting meeting. Uh, Brett had more or less a agenda and papers and PowerPoint type stuff that. Presented it, so. I come away feeling fairly good about, uh, probably getting some money.
That's all I had for my week.
Okay, last, last Tuesday, I had um, a Zoom meeting with, um, regarding our, um. Um, sorry, my mind just went blank, the um, opioid or, or the Humboldt County Coalition. Um, it goes with the, some of the monies and everything that we go with, we had to have a technical assistance, um. On how to do different things and what was needed, and so we, uh, there was six or seven of us that are on the committee that. Um, participated in this, and that's all that I had.
Uh, when we said Tuesday the seventh, I went with Bruce and we went down to the Capitol. Uh, Wednesday morning, I met with the commissioners from VA, uh. Wilson has been sick quite a bit and, well, he got COVID and then he got bronchitis. We met to see what we could needed to do or what we could do there to help him out on the VA part. Um, afternoon, I had the mobile food pantry helped with that. Then uh, Wednesday night, I had the animal shelter meeting. Thursday the night. I got woke up at a little after six. In the morning from, uh, his name was Swett, from Mid-American Energy. Uh, engineering wanting to know if we were fine with the tile work done at that. Switching station out on highway three. And I was still half asleep and I says, why are you calling me at six thirty in the morning? It was on my home phone, he says, well, isn't this your business phone? I says, this is six thirty in the morning, what business, don't start before eight, eight thirty. And I said, you call me back later and I'll talk with you, and I says, it's, I didn't handle it, Rick Peterson did. So he said, I'll call Rick, and I called him back then about eight thirty and. It went to voicemail. I said, what the hell matter with you calling him? Personal phone at six thirty in the morning or six twenty-five. Anyway, um, Friday, I had a board of health meeting at the hospital. No report from. The sanitary in this wo- this month. That's what I had.
How did your meal?
Did done.
Serious?
I had probably forty people and I cooked for two hundred.
Oh my goodness.
But we did have the Veterans Day program up to courthouse here. Fire for the deceased veterans and all veterans on Saturday at eleven o'clock. Uh, other than that, I could busy with, okay.
Well, we wanna thank all of the veterans publicly, as well as. Appreciate them all.
Thank all of them for my freedom.
And we are back here at two o'clock, ready to go, canvas.
Do you have anything to come up this morning? Nope.
Fresh, will that canvas scene be on Zoom or should I call in?
Um.
Yeah, but I'm. Time reserved?
I don't have it reserved, I don't think. Just call in, I think. If that's okay.
Yep, that'll be good, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, I.